That helps, I mean, I can't always tell the voices.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good.
I freak out and I'm like, oh crap. We're here laughing.
Just.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know you need a gash. Cause I know why you're so embarrassed.
Okay. They don't know. Won't be here.
Which, no, Matt won't be here. Matt won't be here.
I've never had a coffee before last month, no I think.
Really? He took a cutie spot?
Been three years, never drank it. Now.
I know.
I don't know why all of this stuff. The place.
No, which is fine.
As far as they can tell. Come on, Sam.
Yeah, after.
Yeah.
Not that long.
I just got a little.
I'm not there yet, I'll dilute it now.
Yeah. We are. Good. Ready? Okay. I'll call the order of the February seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, Ferndale Planning Commission. Bar, Baker, Raisin.
Here.
Bar, Kelly, Martin.
Here.
Shaw Walter, Williamson, Chair Roderger.
Here. Can I have a motion to excuse our absent member?
To excuse Commissioner Shaw Walter.
First thing I oppose? Yeah, but agenda this evening, the chief staff, anyone else? If I did, I was looking for a move, who has submitted?
I'm moved to accept the agenda submitted.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, the first item is minutes from our last meeting, a little bit of a marathon meeting on January twelfth. I know those. A packet a little bit later, has there been any comments, changes, amendments to the minutes? All of them to approve as submitted? I move to. Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, we. Thing, uh, for public hearing, who is will have staff do a brief session to the project, let the applicants come up and make their present. Uh, the commission has initial questions, I can ask those questions. A public hearing, if anyone with. We have podium, please state your name and address and limit your three minutes. Please address your comments to the commission. Uh, and then at the end of the public hearing, listen, answer any questions. Questions or comments that were, that arose during the public hearing. So with that, our first item is a public hearing. East eight mile road, a special land use for a medical marijuana facility. Justin, my report?
Thank you. Um, just to begin. Twelve review of the, um, city's medical marijuana, um, action take. So far, there have been, um, three facilities that, um, went through the special process with approval. The planning commission, a recommendation for approval from the planning commission, then, um, with, um, so, um, to date. Those, um, these are facilities have opened yet, um, which, um, city council, I guess, to, um, review. Adopted ordinance for medical marijuana facilities and operations, um, and the resolution that they came to, uh, ended up. Ending this, this approval period, um, for that hadn't worked. Um. Of a. Still approved, um, the suspension thing after medical marijuana applications, um, till at least one of the three previously. Um, facilities had opened, um, those products, uh, just getting certificate of occupancy, um, the third is, is or is in. Construction phase, so he, they're, they're, where they're actually in the process, um, and along with. That council made, moved that. Application, applicants that process continue going through the process, uh, and, um, and like I said, once. One initially approved. Between. Months, um, with council's approval, um, staff begin to start. For the moment, right now, there are only five abilities. Within, in various that review, um, one of those, one of those applicants is. As you said, fifteen twenty-one east road, uh, the applicant submitted full patient package that includes a two thousand dollar non-refundable. Um, um, site and plan. Applicant met with city staff, seeing the police chief and city attorney to work through, um, the business plan, um, but. Um, after some checking forth, um, and some revisions made, we felt, staff felt that proposed. The, uh, the ordinance for marijuana, um, and, and city ordinance and legislation, um. Marijuana facilities are permitted in district where the, uh, property is located, the office district. Do you want me to go through the whole medical marijuana? Lit, the ordinance or?
No.
This is, um, near the, to the north is a single family residential, um, C three extended business, a mixture of C three. Extended business, office and M one limited industrial are to the west, um, you'll be familiar, this was the buildings to the west. The, the pawn shop that was recently approved, um, a medical supply store. The recent, um, facility. East is. Zone for off. Entire site is meant and, um, for commercial development. In. Seem to meet the intent or requirements of all the special land use, um, considerations in the ordinance, um. As far as the medical marijuana facilities, we reviewed location, make sure five hundred feet, uh, within five feet of another facility. Um, educational institution, school, or daycare center, which is in the ordinance applicant, I'll let. In a few minutes, get into more of their, um, proposed business plan, but they, um, caregivers. Should page. Um, purity plan with an onsite. Second piece, the review was focused specifically on the site, um, as parking has been discussion with this, um. For other properties, we played paid close attention. And this, you'll see when the applicant reviews of the site plan, um, pretty much between the medical marijuana. Which, um, has parking provided for it and, um, house which has three spaces for. The total space, um, the parking ordinance. Um, and is. To restripe and improve the condition of the surface parking. M dot, um, once again confirmed that, um, the road circulates as. Road is M dot owned, and so any, um. Fire right of way permit, I just. That are, that planning to do any amendments there, um. The applicant also is planning on business and low putting at the front, unless they're gonna remove the, um. So any access to the building, I've been at emergency, uh, fire, fire. E, ingress and egress. It's the. Proposing to add three landscape trees, meaning to the north, tougher to the resident, yeah, um. And the site plan. Um, requirements, first technical. It's for. Fire, um, lease and circulation. Regulation. Time I'll take any questions you have, or if you'd like the applicant.
Thank you. Yep. Please, um, introduce and your project, and if you would, if. So not only just your, your, ah, just your, also a day in the life of your operation, how many? How well it works of, um, your. You envision your typical day?
I'm ready, but. Well, you know, my name is Steve Polachella. Uh, I'm. So. There's one. Where you're working. City, you're, uh, medical marijuana buyer. Who's. In. Including. Part of my state law for a number of years. Hey, my, um, I'm gonna try to do most. Mr. Canada is. On this yesterday, I was also in my project. To open. Um, kind of doing more talking for them, also. Um, for the folks in, uh, from the public who don't know. So serious. Um, choose my clients, uh, I've been to. Before and live down the next year, who is that? My client. Particularly because I think all the time trying to prove this law and trying. I believe you. So, uh, so that we can avoid the kind of optimism without. It's important that I'm helping them, seeing when I'm anywhere to stay. And I remember, uh, uh, here. I have a. So my, my client's meeting name is, uh, so. Speaking. But I want to speak briefly to the. Uh, here, um, I, I. I want to tell. Your, uh, first and foremost that, uh, for those of you who watch the news and listen to all of the. Where to listen to. First of all. For a matter of. Detail of this country and our lobbying for deal, and I think. Actually, we are, I think you're, uh, Ferndale, who are taking. Proactive. Um, have. So. Of yourselves, so that they could, like, see some. But you should trust them. Uh, yeah. We have to go through this. Because. So almost. Um, but, but, um. I, so the residents of Ferndale, uh, the same trusted to pay them a, um, good job, um, and handle all of this, and. If you're Ferndale. These towns don't, uh, Detroit is because they. Leave out of this, and, and it's to be able to work this easily, that, as opposed to. Which is how soon. So if this is not, and, and will not, we feel. I will probably discuss your, so. My life today. Um, this is voting and unloading, again, this is a private medical facility, um, for Canada, because he's always got his eye on something. He's like, that's why he's not his wife that calls. So he has strong ties to, to the city and. Saw the opportunity. A private, um, commercial facility that would give mutual location. As patients. We all agree that having. Marijuana. Can help. Have a good idea, uh, and. Traveling to Michigan, what I have found is that the majority. A lot of the. Frankly, uh, this, the few things, if, if there's any way to. Under the current structure of the government law, is to have a commercial facility where. Maybe. It's kind of mutual safe, but so that they can, um. My. It's what they decide. What would be, just like a private medical facility, uh, there'll be. These will be by appointment. Put this to the public. Maximum, uh, twenty-five people who will cover. In this facility, uh, we don't have private. So, and, and because. We. They will not. So it's not going to be. First thing, we feel if this. Were to hire an armed security person, both these don't. Uh, the desk is necessary, but, again, not where you feel facility not going to be the one that. Uh, private medical facility, so we will have a central under. Fund security system, uh, and if, at any point, we're working with the city, uh, any concerns would definitely be necessary. When we do that, um, really, uh, that I wanted you to know, um. We have. Worked very hard. With the city of Ferndale, at, at least. You can bring about it, to come to business and operate. As I. Require. I don't know, I act, but I also said. You know. Carver, um, that was something. Through the area of all of us, uh, we've already spoken to the folks, uh, at the park, driving the, the M dot. We break all the, the parking insane, so that's been. We. Made a plan so that garbage can all be in the. In breasts and, and breasts, maybe other. And that we have made a, uh, uh. Sprint. Called, I mean, a plan, especially in the back, we're like, we're, we're, we're. Lover, uh, and the residential areas, so really, all this will be a nice private, private medical facility that is. We're happy and answering your questions. So. But we'll talk. And making stuff, um, and, uh, we also have our representatives answering questions, um, the interior plan.
Alright, I put questions, then we'll see. You may have stated, if I missed, I apologize, so you said you'll have caregivers.
This is playing calls for opti-five, but right now.
Have a. If necessary, are there any other employees that would be. Facility receptionist, any other persons?
No, now we're moving. We do. Now we can respect. Person, and they're concentrated in the operations plan, but we. And higher than that, we also need care. Who also. That would allow them to be there. Um, manage the facility.
And so remind me, how many? Riding eight parking for your facility, so if, in. If you had a maximum of five, and a security, have up to. Please, any one.
I have a couple of council. Only, uh.
Terms, so. Dispensaries, which, in, on your site plan on sheet one. Has extra.
For deal, just.
Correct.
Meeting room, so they're not exclusive to one caregiver, based on whose appointment it is, so if there are no caregivers present at the facility. Any.
Whether they have marijuana this side, like or not. Yes. Have. Take. Just for most. Forever, I mean, no actual law, uh, uh, required, but have, uh. This is a business plan, we're discussing half, usually what we do is we have a set of security. For if a person needs to, uh, store the amount of caregiving. You know, not. Uh, we don't foresee an issue because they. Have alt age. On there. On there, so these caregivers will really be for appointment, bringing for. You know, longer than drunk and, you know, um, under cultivation, so it's actually, um. Kind of has a, a different facility to cultivate. Sorry. Have a committed facility in Detroit.
So the storage room that's shown on the plans. Marijuana store. Well, that's. But no. Part, we have just, you have. Site plan that shows an office, lobby, dispensary on each side, and then behind one. In a sex restroom and a storage area, so is that storage? Anna, or is that just? Okay. Stand for over. Marijuana.
Wasn't. And we was. Or. Against an interior wall, it's generally practice.
And then getting to the second part of the, so, a, a building here that. Percent on.
Yes, yeah.
So, so you're asking for. Only you, for entire, or I'm sorry, specially. For an entire building, but you're only using twenty percent. The other eighty.
Sure. It's, it's just warehouse space. A building. Really fantastic, we could deal. And it's in the zoning and. The opportunities. Uh. We made stores. No, um, first. So. Something, but it won't. Anything else for. Just happens to be.
It's a roll-up door and a overhead door and a, uh.
Well, it's one.
Uh, Ian County. Yeah. Uh, roll-up door, the back will be blocked up, so that will be.
Okay, so that's being removed? So the. Yeah. So anything that was into the storage of this warehouse, you have to come into the front door, so not. An extra car.
No. That would be a lot more building than. We still have.
Other commissioners?
I do, actually for Justin, for. And for. So Justin, is applicant. Milk Care Collective, the initial requests that we received that are current.
For part of the initial five, so the two that were in process, I think, when council. The, um, resolution to processing, these, us two, we were.
But the. End of August was still to three, and what would happen if eighteen months of no construction. Then that would roll off, a fourth and fifth one would then be considered, and we said we'd move the paperwork along, so as not to pen them, but it was. To go beyond. The laws were cleared up, unless they didn't with the proper. Off, the initial three hold on one month.
Uh. They, they have not opened, they've.
But are they, have they, have they rolled off the person? But after eighteen months. It's not happening anymore, because.
No, not. None have rolled off, um.
Be the fourth. Side of the three we would have.
Um, my, my understanding, Dan Chris, was that these. Would be. Processed.
We have three in the city.
Okay.
Until one of the, they rolled off after eighteen months because of inactivity.
Um, like I said, I, I mean, that wasn't my, that wasn't my understanding of it, and it involved my county. That's something we did.
There's five other council members, we have to go back. Um, thank you, one. For marijuana, I mean, I like it, but. No, no, well, I want to be true. At council, and, um. And I'm actually really. Personally, I follow you in the case of you guys, um, I appreciate, couple of questions about the business. You use the overview and preliminary, that the member manager of Michigan Health. Continuate that the owner, really a customer facility as well? Okay. Okay. So. No, you're fine, um, so with the eighty percent warehouse space, your intent then is, it's a, there's no, I know there are businesses, people are. The five. Your intent to deal on, not gonna store anything there for any. Okay. Uh. Other advice I'd offer for employees. Uh, for purpose, uh, an edge and or a company uniform. Be suffice, actually for corporate facility, see, form is not sufficient to ID, the identity, I mean, I can't. Eyes are shirt, but doesn't mean I should be near a truck. So really, I'd encourage you to limit that just to ID badges only issued, um, because. Very easily, if you're a small company, and I expect you to know, not, but just from a, a sound security. I, I would, the IDs. Forms.
Is that in the? Is that in the business plan?
Sure, it's on. Um, I don't see a page number, but it's, uh, in, in one. Leads, um, all staff will be readily identifiable with ID band or a company uniform.
The, and company uniform. Operation.
Um, and other than that, that's, that's my questions, thank you.
Just, do you know the special land use and applies for the future build of the space?
Yeah, uh, uh. That is. The special land. Up for. Specifically, so if. If there was a change in. They also have to be changed here in the city as well, if we. For to, um, caregivers or, um, or rec use, or any change to the. The special land applies to the law as it stands now, uh, for any. Expansion or a change in, in law, applicants back, uh, through the special process again, is my.
And then the calculation for parking, as really this plan that you have. Added.
Right, um, right now, the, the parking is split, split between the two, you, um, if they. To say, if they. To expand the, um, the medical facility portion of it, get into the warehouse, they would still have to. Um, that's the one. Um, well. And right now, their maximum with eight parking spaces, so they would have to come to this and request a parking waiver.
Clarify, so any increase in square footage or in. Cars would require to amend land use?
Correct.
They have. Looking, either they define additional park, parking waiver.
Correct.
Any other? Last time?
Through the chair, Ms. Polachella, you stated during your presentation, uh. And, and I want to make sure correctly, that, um. Medical marijuana. Series, I suppose, are able to do transactions. Uh, and that's in that.
I don't, I don't really. It probably is. Um, without worrying you too much, the medical marijuana. Okay, the only thing the medical marijuana does is. Patient. Doesn't say anything. Um, the majority of municipalities without any virus can stay or without any damage. Um, either not has any ordinances whatsoever and then we see what. Uh, or they have, um, quit, um, all, you know, uh, to, that's the greatest thing you can, or virtual or that's really, must do whatever you can. But when we tell them they start making the suspension, uh, passes, uh, bad noise may. So we want to, so, uh, yeah, uh, you know, how this goes for a single report, um, but this is. Troy, the best, the count of that. Like, again, are from the residential areas, they're not, uh, then for, uh, for, uh. So that's how the point two oh nine.
Under the, uh, basically, you could, in a residential neighborhood and people could be doing medical marijuana transactions in any home and you just wouldn't know.
Right now, marijuana is here. Should be very great, you're, pretty good patient, you're generally, cost to, um, the only, that you announce. Uh, from prosecution of the state law, uh, hot work of places. Full property, public transportation, so. So truly, then the divisionary.
Thanks.
To add a bit about Roman numerals, three, four, um, intersection title. In your office plan, and I see here that you list other services that may be offered at the facilities such as yoga class, massage services. And other kind of health services, and I said, some of which are yet to be determined, but I. To how that. Implement the primary news site and short or not, the public will be able to try take of those services.
So, um, last first, we already know, um, really, uh, plans about private. Treat the patients, all my patients, caregivers. We don't at any point right now contemplate any additional services, um, it, other than, it seems to be a, um. We don't anticipate that, uh, other than, you know, those, certain patients in there in trouble, any of those things, or any of those. We also, for example, gas, uh, some sort of condition that they require, uh, uh, their, underneath their, massage gear, the stair and. We don't know, we haven't been really touched by that, he added it for the potential option someday of maybe. Nothing right now contemplated as far as, but frankly, we don't.
I made through the chair, just, did you say, if you envision that would be inclusive of physical or occupational or.
Well, I would say so, um, I put.
So you have no intent to deliver services that could be built to an insurance company? Okay, thank you.
And just, in your operations plan, state that, you've stated potentially that these services may be offered. Was in your operation that says that would be limited. Own. I think that, because again, I think. Next question is how do you become a member? And how'd you, I mean, so that's not tied or public, how, how, happened?
It's not, I mean, most of the time it's friends of friends, or, you know, I, I mean, I have your sort of opinion that the. Issue with me, I don't know if I'm alone, I didn't know I'd ever been in this industry right now, and now I think I got really big, would have no idea, you know, like, go to high school. How to get, to get certain, this is advertised, it will advertise, it's such, it's just.
Okay, so.
The rolls either through physicians, uh, the rolls through. Certain. Send to the voucher, you know, this, for my client, see if you're matching.
Come in where?
Here, but I mean, I, you know, other like, uh, nurses that are open to public that are in our office, I encourage them to, to, to match. That's where, you know, a lot of it's on my, you know, that's one of the biggest problems with this law.
Actually, hey, so if you're average Joe walking down, you come across, is, the doors locked, there's in. And who's not a member get buzzed in?
Maybe just to, to speak about how I, you know. And, and we go to that, and so. And then, um, one of the, you know, said, you know, I'm interested in the patient, so this. For example, okay, let's, our here, there's, uh, when we ask two patients, we do, and we're all connected on the fly, uh, and there are a lot of. And help to, um, talk to our staff, if you're familiar about, what might be marijuana, how, that, that, that. Uh, is capable of aiding a particular strain, uh, not familiar, that there's, it might need to be a little taken. This is what we.
And more follow-up question, as you're speaking, so, in this facility, so let's say there are A and B in the rooms, working. And a buzzer at the one, did and coming to talk. Besides the front, is there an other, are offices secured? In terms of. Other medical facilities have at least cured vesting area that you'd be locked, you'd into where there'd be a lobby, there's no act of medical marijuana, so that even if you got through the front door, you're not. Within hands way of actually touching or getting your hands on, which is marijuana, whether or not you have a card or not, medical or.
There is a front lobby that you, but the two patient rooms are, they're locked, they're, they would be locked on the doors, um, there's a.
Okay, but there's no marijuana in the warehouse? Right, the front door, so let's say you, let's say you're there and you just want marijuana. The office lobby, there's medical, two dispensary rooms, so those rooms. They can't get in, even if they went through the front, not in a place where there's marijuana readily available, still behind another door, is that correct? Your face, not, okay, okay, so there's multiple levels of locks, they have to go. Okay, and then you mentioned there's no sign in your presentation, so there's. It's a blank face. I believe it does.
Through the, there, there is on, a. I think, uh, a sign to be mounted in the building, if you can speak.
Um, yeah, the existing panel is, um, would just, uh, possible, so in the future, it's just later, that's just there, there's no place for.
I, does allow for signage as long as it's street doesn't. Marijuana, of marijuana.
Right. Yeah, we can't control content too much, but.
Is there any, your questions that arose?
Do the chair if I could. To this section regarding employees in the first line, um, that the oper, operating with a single employee caregiver, is there a difference between the employee and the caregiver? Depending contract, um, a lot of times when these comes in, um, have difficulty understanding. An employee to be there, is this person bringing marijuana, marijuana coming from, is a caregiver's. Or are they making money off the transaction itself?
Yes, caregiver makes money off the transaction itself, AKA, our, um. Caregiver must have their own marijuana.
So in that, not. Okay, the time we've, you've represented in here that they're employees, that's.
So, only, you're your brother, and, um, and if we had a receptionist. A receptionist who was also, maybe would pay that person for the receptionist's. But, I'm sure.
As far as, as I know, right now, owner, that's going to be the caregiver, um, if you, caregivers, how, regulate where they get their marijuana from, how is that? You know, insured for quality or that it's not.
We can't, uh, I, I, also problem we have in marijuana is that, there's no, there's no one, public care, medical, uh, clinic. I really, that's conversationable, that's recommendations, um, which are, you know, facing both. Especially marijuana, patients, so, um, but as, again, um, for us, people seem to be all, has no, a lot of. Obviously encourage patients to study medicine. Think that, like, if they just tell them in the lobby, now is that, there's no costume, I, this is no costume. Can't remember, uh, my first, um, staff. We originally had in our business, there were no, all the marijuana tested and, he called, you were, he was trying to do what I've been saying. And, um, he made us take it out because it's a, a, the caregiver, the caregivers, you know, um. It's, I think that's all it says, but I really, you know, try to, it's, it's, that again, why we're not, it's. Free, um, anything like that, so we're really hoping for. They'll be required to.
And just in response, is your, of your art, uh, organization going to send the defense of claim, actual claim, for somebody. By, shivers, I, I don't listen, so I didn't know.
We have, it's very difficult to get insurance, obviously, we have, we have, there is, one, ensure, lots of, I'm sure, that I know of, from that. Medical facilities, insurance, um, also your brokers, I would, there's still, of course.
Actually, a question for, um, uh, question that I rest of the. So, the questions are, are there for staff for the, um. Do you want, do those now, or do we come back for additional questions?
We can back, I think the public could benefit from the discussion before they have their opportunity to speak, to do that, at your discretion.
I guess one of them, okay. About parking, um, parking, um, way, traffic, um, just so it means we've got ingress, ungress right in front of this building, um, I, I brought it up the last time we talked about something at this site. Being, a, a problem that I could see, um, within, uh, sort of. Draping and clearly in an, in an imperfect situation, but that it was going to be called the closer that we got west end, um, and now we're there. Um, and this very uncomfortable, the, the traffic. Patients, the closer it's done, and I wonder if you could talk a bit about, is there any larger to address this? It's now trying to put eight parking spots there and thinking, way traffic, physically don't see how it could work.
Good questions, good points, um, as far, our discussion's been with, um. It's M dot owned, so the business owners would have to come together with a, that works together to, that type of, of traffic, uh. Is, are there, there are city plant who adjust that. Something I can ask about for, um, they have, as we do for all our site, have traffic, uh, safety officer, detective, um, review the, um, circulation, and he. He did not have any issue with it, um, any of the properties that have been brought up for this, sort of town, um, but. Idea if there's any up, plan for the road in the future, um, as far as I know, there are.
I mean, just looking through, I, I. Little car, I, I can't imagine another car coming to me and being able physically to fit in, and I, if engineer's gone out. Are, so it, that has to be involved in prove any major circulation changes. That they would prove parking spaces and that, or M dot. Actually, I think you can fit eight there, how does that, decision that we've just.
Yeah, I would, I definitely look into that more.
Of my, it's, it's biggest concerns and. Special land uses and rezonings that are happening right here, but. Marijuana across the street, but. That's at the top of my list in terms of, of about safety concern.
Okay, well, that's, that's something we can look in.
And just a quick, a block right there, since it has been top of development, just going across the block, so, and, there's a. Built, and then this would be the next building, and the pawn shop occupies the next, takes over to the medical support. Area there, and then everything west of that is self-storage, correct? After this, the only thing is the end unit.
The lead piece is Flynn Machine Shop.
Okay, is that.
On the, right? It might be for sale, um, I'm not sure if it's occupied right now or not, they were, uh, they, they were occupied a few months ago because there was an, um, actually, no, sorry. Flynn, I think, occupied, there was, um, but there was a portion of the building. By a, uh, chapter C of O.
Gene products on the corner. But, but that in operation?
Like it was, yeah.
Okay, so there, there's no vacant, in terms of that block?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, is there any other question of the commission? All right, let's open the public hearing at this time, uh, we did a little different this evening, just to hopefully get more information to the public for, for the public hearing. That triggers any more. So with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at seven forty-seven, if anyone would wish to address the, this topic, come to the podium and again, state your name, address, and please address the commission in thirty-three minutes.
Hi, twenty nineteen, I'm not for it, but, more questions, have you shared?
Can you please address your comments to the commission, please?
Okay, what, um, what is yours, like, are they land use or do, do they? Okay, what, um, what is your, like, are they empty use or do, do they have license in the state and at the, or just pull that back right through us?
Please, address your, and the public.
What's the estimated delivery of, like, one, here, and will this leasing space at all, at least to the pawn shop? Because we don't need storage in there, that extra eighty percent that she has. It's from this here.
Any other questions, just if you want to share with the commission?
No, mainly about position, special pieces, I think.
Okay, all right, thank.
I mean, hey, hi, this comes over, I mean, if there's an empty store, that, are you, what you plan to put, like, in that other empty unit, um, as, whatever's empty, the cash register, that corner there? I don't know, it's very outside. We lost one neighbor and the other neighbors gave up on this, and if I could get out of my house by the time they opened it, that's why we.
So anyone else who wishes to commission?
Hi, I'm, and. My name is Robert, and, um, you guys have any? Um, a couple things, one is, start the parking, um, you guys said there's eight parts in the back, so, uh, the other, it's ninety feet, or should you, why? That's there right now, probably has to set one for it. Um, you guys should get some kind of street, parking impact because of, people are there, and you guys can missing, three, three buildings are empty, actually, next to, uh, the. Thing over thirty grand is a, a kind of, a meaner, any kind of, any kind of, uh, I think that'd be, uh. Even our mayor, if, uh, we're saying, a little, can I have your, he was actually not for, uh, this kind of, the, because of the state, by the, problems we have. And so that's cured up, so, is, we have three places already, and, granted, the next, you guys mentioned that you, you know, for one, uh, uh, oh, I, I already had one facility. That one, they did, uh, right, so, you're, so, we have robbery charge, again, or, um, I don't know what happened with that, and, there's good. Again, uh, there is one time, you know, uh, and again, I mean, you know, there, there, it's a, and you guys, you know, when you, you cannot, you cannot maneuver into a street. You guys are saying two ways, twenty, twenty-four feet, and by code, by city code, and I, I did that, and that, around that corner of West End, it's getting really, someone's gonna come, hold an hour, coming off of eight mile. Go, they're gonna slow down, they're gonna, um, off of West End, because they were in my whole hour, and it's gonna be, give us a pass, it's very simple.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick, the, has a study, uh, here's, uh, addresses or information I put in here, you can kind of look, if you want, you know, probably, you know, everyone knows about, pretty, which have marijuana, uh, you know, in it, you know. And a caregiver, caretaker, caregiver can hold up thirty-two plants, I believe, you know, you know, again, is, is this guy growing his own? You know, it should be very related by, by, you know, some kind of factor, you know? Go to, yeah, just, uh, drive, you get this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would address the commission, public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll, the public hearing at nine fifty-four, seven, sorry, seven, seven fifty, seven, I'm sorry, I just, all right. Um, in terms of needing to look here, one of the comments about the, um, shop, um, what can go, and that was something we were actually just discussing. In terms of, the site is zoned office, which allows for abuses, the city, it's up to the free market for who wants to, sort of lease the building. And list of use submitted in our district are, you know, published within our zoning, but, you know, what could go there, uh, by our zoning ordinance, sort of, races. So I guess we really can't answer that question definitively, if someone purchases and makes it for that site. Um, it's a station with a pawn, um, I guess, I'll ask the applicant again, that, of the building that's being used, getting some questions. I'm sure you're aware there's a pawn shop that was approved, um, just, uh, immediately adjacent to this, but, um, the discussions with the pawn, would you be willing to condition that limited, if, for flow storage? It would seem like, in your space, they might have stuff, but that, that's something that you would exclude? So you'd be willing, um, you, issue of approval to not have any association, not accept storage with the pawn shop?
Sure.
If approved, the, again, this would be the recommendation to city council, so the final is with the city council. What would be your, um, moving forward, what you would expect?
I, I want to tell, um, you know, completely, I'm, 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 I'm. Yeah, um, in regards to, all it's gonna be doing is, uh, just a light gray cane, solid breaking, existing, uh, C and B block. Instead of wood, those will be painted and, um, damage breaks will be fixed.
Enclosing overhead door.
Closing the overhead, and it, guys just, uh, part, uh, partitioned, uh, on the state, so, well, for the gap.
We have, we have to call it a winter, so.
Just as I'm, I'm looking at the view of the building right now, it looks like, go on the back.
Um, no, that.
No, the current building.
Oh.
So you're taking out the current window?
Oh, yes.
Okay, because the current win- building has a, a overhead door, and the active, the door, window would be, over. And then plans, your plans, what about the, um, sorry, the driveway, uh, approach to that, unsadded?
Uh, yes.
And then, that tree trees? Yes, that's shown there. It doesn't say anything about the window on the site plan, just, make that note. Okay. Um, what determines a caregiver, uh, I'm sure, I don't know if Justin might speak to it, I'm sure you probably, best, it's a stated definition, um, it doesn't have to be a measure, that is, the, the regulations, so if you can. Looking at the mic more.
Because marijuana is still, that, when, when people, so, if you can, it's, it's, by doctor, and it cannot be dispensed by, um, schedules to, you know, people, so, right now, marijuana is listed as the most dangerous drug in the world. Which is, changes, um, the only thing that can be done, uh, as far as, um, getting access to, is either going their own home, like, a patient, usually, it would be certified, but I don't, um, and actually, the possible that, uh, and then, you can, for the, for the home, just, for, like, and for facilities, and, for caregiver, to, for, for example, if I, if I was, and calm down, law, laws, and, um, so, I would, um, um, there are people who, um, can also, and, and, marijuana for up to five, probably, people, and, yes, and, um, Chris, Chris, you were, were, have a lot of, facility that was licensed by, uh, in, um, and allows to be there, like, um, to, so, um. And, to qualify, uh, which is, allows, um, that's one of the things that, certainly, you can, have, where, and that's marijuana, and, uh, not.
Sir, um, the discussion, mission.
This is, uh, who has, they only have the, uh, and, uh, and they are designated by, uh, children, and, um, and both up to, and trans, uh, to. All right, far as, as the, twenty ten, this year, we're, I'm not familiar with that, I can, um, in, in, two thousand thirteen, uh, when you, uh, happened, it had a, there, that, I think, uh, that, one, uh, um, uh, twenty, uh, February, it was fairly broad, and, um, having, uh, most people, that, um, not sure when that, if you can, for, um, this is, in other twenty-six states, that, have, marijuana, go one, for, go one of two, uh, you might say, for creative, and you kind of, like, a model, go find, uh, in the state, you, you know, you definitely, uh, my, you, don't want to use, like, marijuana, there's, um, so, uh, the act is, test, dispensaries were presumed, because, well, in, in the world, dispensing were presumed to be, uh, state, uh, in Michigan, uh, on February twenty, uh, February, uh, so, this was, at the, Michigan Supreme Court, um, read, uh, marijuana act in Michigan, that only five people, it is, um, that, is now, and, that's the, down in Detroit, but again, you can count, you have, uh, Detroit, Detroit, uh, and, uh, right now, other state law, one, third can, is called, uh, marijuana, uh, there, uh.
All right, thank you for that response. Um, okay, bringing it back to the question, um, see, circulation and parking is a concern, that's a point of contention in this area, um, that's come from us. Um, and again, I think that, regardless of the use, that's, could be a site plan for a liquor store, or a flower store, or, anything that was permitted under that right, I think, the same concern.
Dead hall office.
Right, a dead hall office, um, anything that would posed at this location, I think would have a concern. Um, and so, generate what Justin indicated previously, so we've gotten, all of the, these that are being, all resurfacing and restriping and improving the, um, condition of the, in front of the, that's correct?
Correct.
So the only gaps in the system essentially leave end building, and, or, I'm sorry, the medical supply, store, is that correct?
Correct, um, and is my understanding that the self-storage facility and were to work with the tenants, uh, property owners along the strip, uh, is of that, but, uh, I understand that they were, or, the pawn were looking to, uh, right-of-way permit within the next month.
Question with property owners, businesses, and has there been any agreement, discussion about improving the drive, being, uh, cumulative, you know, time use of scale and using the same, doing the same, coordinating services?
Well, making services, yes, um, the, the pawn shop contacted us, and, uh, so we can go ahead, and that we were gonna have access to the contractors, that we'd use the same elevation, I believe, we've also been, um, since, I don't know, case, um, all, all, so, we're gonna go ahead, it's all information, the same elevation is, to which I, it is, it is, you know, we can stop, you know.
It's part of that, there are, you're to, the, I guess is my question, because clearly, that comes in, kind of comes in in front of the, her facility, and the drive, there's, um, to the west from there, but going east is where, the, is it west end? Um, I guess concern, and, that, as it gets most narrow, that spot, um, tie up the curb, the area, and, I'm sure. Area versus.
That's absolutely something I can, them, for sure.
Again, I, I think, I don't know that it's, it's fair for permission to limit the use of, based on the exist- existing non-conforming section, um, that were to improve, would be, regardless of, you have, low, and, and was part of pros that we talked about for the self-storage, there's not a whole lot of narration, we needs for that use.
And I believe, when we, you had the site, instance where much of Ferndale has older, this was an instance would be an, an improvement in, um, area, not lessen performance, what's there.
And it's hard to tell from the plans that were submitted, exactly, see, I'm, the dimension of the parking spaces, but then what is the, I'm, I'm looking for the width from the parking to eight mile.
You know, drawings were, um, submitted from the, which was.
Right, understood.
Not necessarily on what the exact dimensions of, parks, this is about.
Okay. Per, to, after question, after, with, the, some, eight, and the internal circulation, depending on how much space in there, if there is space, even if the feet, um, I'm sure, because it's hard to know, the, are in front of that building, ledge, up, on eight mile.
I also ask, can you, there is sidewalk, uh, with West End, and it appears to continue, into the existing, walkway, and I wonder if we may also look at considering, operation, that walkway, I think, appears that they're at the same, but if this, the, viewing sidewalk, from, that end of the street, and if someone were to be, in this direction, I would see that as a conflict.
I think, um, you're, it, what you're saying?
Just because, so, sidewalk is, it out on, outside of the street, it appears that it's, even though it's, right, it's more in front of the building, it appears, it's, sidewalk, no, there would be, a lot of, general, that area, from a safety perspective.
Would be some benefit, as part of, as you mentioned, to take the sidewalk on the, side, and in front of the, and to somehow angle it, because then, once you, go where the drive goes, close, mile. then needs to be um, the essentially would be the drive in front of being essentially is where it comes in. Maybe with some striping across the drive aisle. Which I don't think is ideal to demarcation someone to go the path that was back here that's up here. Okay, so I stated earlier, this is a recommendation from planning city council. It is worth repeating and I appreciate Councilman Martin's I guess I would of the citations that have been posed, I was aware of a moratorium of sorts that was um, and so I was confused on the number. So as far as the commission has been approved and has have opened.
Correct.
Curious it's fallen at eighteen months. Right, um, the first one nine mile center. I know just by has recently been and has been set up you know, they're oh.
Yes, we last month certificate of occupation through police chief um, and his only um, curious and other than that, they're from a building perspective, they're ready to be certificate.
Okay, so in Council Martin's comments that there's that one is then so involved on Lewisson?
Is he the following which is a trade elevation?
So that happens before that. So then the third um, that was is on Hilton just north way.
Appears to be
In a concern.
Not that
That our thing was went fusk. They what they considered and I I uh, you had mentioned, Councilman up in that you are acting everything you said.
Sorry, again?
You, yeah. Okay. The um, uh, deemed it substantial substantial as part of the um, resolution.
So the resolution limits three facilities to be operated at any given time. An endpoint which is being fixed in the council?
And that we visit those were that one the other issue was to have any other than the one that was open you know, that the county rated, uh, we plans with this and so we wanted our belt. We did what like
Okay, so letting uh, even hypothetically, if this moves forward this evening, aware that you are being left. So the speed changes. Going back to the comment of it's open. Um, like
I mean since they previously approved one has opened humans with the proof site plan special then at least six months or until eight until the eighth period special land use. Uh,
So chance was approved and they got their clicker that that's in line right now. Then they chance.
Want to confer with our city attorney. That would be for two, just just I don't know if I may the chair, the the intent and the this is in general various of medical marijuana facility. But what we saw was a fair of so people would get permits and they're gonna operate the and then decide when they'll open. Well, is it if to be true to what we were accomplish with that, we we have a lot of facilities. So we put a time that said you somebody else probably in the we had who who could get it together. We wanted to see that move forward.
Gotcha, okay. And so as long and so technically you're it's in line. I guess still at in to the I guess. Um, depending on
However, that's um, the city of under no obligation
Right. So as a special land use that uh, a discretion review from the planning commission, um, understanding that this use is um, has decided as a special land use in this district. Um, but the planning commission is to review merits based on um, heights. Um, the to be served by existing facilities, enhanced health, safety, welfare, consistent with the purpose of the master road from ability of the area and be designed and constructed, operated to be with the vicinity. So commission is bound to consider in addition to this for medical marijuana. Like Justin referenced earlier, through them specifically if you do relate to the operation hours pretty um, no use of medical marijuana at the facility. No hours access etcetera, and this have been met, is that correct? Okay. Open for more discussion, questions?
Uh, with the chair, actually, I guess, so I guess my first um, is as relate for little marijuana, um, I'm sort of this someone in um, that's something standard all facilities need um, has to do with physical separation sites as well as other special types of Never seen they've met. Um, and I believe this comes up with the with um, not as well because it was quick Hazel Park order. Um, but when I'm is there's current medical marijuana uh, on the south side of eight mile probably two and a half, three blocks is outside of hundred foot radius. Um, but this it right the border of Hazel. So do you have any information about Hazel zoning or treatment marijuana? Um, is there the possibility something could move in right across the street on west on the other side of west end and then suddenly because China thing is for sale a few other things for up eight mile, so thinking not just a five years with but
Right, I I'm not familiar with their stance on marijuana. Uh, that's I would also take a look at.
Okay. Um, it's knowing that the building that seems up along that corridor. Um, that's we're at center where and Hazel Park and to and how do we how do we treat things in terms of that like rule so that all number of the same use the same neighborhood.
But we can far none of the five hundred feet today.
Correct.
And then just as a follow up, and I don't know was this information on with consider marijuana or that the pass that requirement you
But this yeah.
Yeah.
Please, sir. A thousand I have a score one from the law and a thousand a lot of another law and a thousand which which may have some areas all versus you that Detroit is just
But so there is a thousand foot spacing, so if one were south side of eight mile currently.
There is church there currently, but yes.
Okay.
Is currently that the women's gas doesn't sound very key to first and is actually considering a true thousand foot radius over at the and that's short there.
Okay. Okay. Um, I think so we from Detroit. Right. I mean to my knew that usually has those spaces without five hundred don't remember outcome station about the Hazel border.
Right.
Them tonight.
We we were not concerned but we did estimate how potential future. Understood, but would Hazel Park have a reciprocal requirement? My and I can't tell this park what to do, but my my concern about this recite, uh, which is sort of contemplated there.
I think it does beg the question whether Detroit feels like a medical marijuana facility would have impact area. Uh, it's just seems odd to me.
Yes. Um, the uh, the other thing is site specific here, but not this use. We've now a number of special to and names in this strip and there were decisions or actions about. Does indicate the do reconsider in this area, is there I guess you know, with your profession uh, you guys is is this indicative of that like we've evolved enough from the last, you know, term plan and I know we're right now. Maybe assess is telling us it's that we thought fit twelve years ago to fit now.
I agree, we uh, so the last meeting when we the master plan was court kind of a session for everyone, the next would have more of a fourth and one of those things we'd like to do is talk about districts like this and possibly be revised appropriate zoning is of the top ones that I think we'd we would reevaluate process.
Yeah, and I think just personally you know, about the master plan process eight mile
eight mile this time, I think we struggled with, you know, of uses we wanted along our eight mile border. I know we were very conscious of re along the entire front.
All businesses are not permitted, I mean, there are a lot that just flat out are not.
And, and the party store after party store, and adult bookstore, and things of that nature, we, we, this district, five is, um, that weren't necessarily allowed. And I think that combined with our property and how, and the fact that we don't have these properties that have been underutilized for so long, sometimes the price is just, and so, I think, I mean, underutilized sites all over, mashed up, and eight miles in iconic.
Well, I guess a special land use that was contemplated as a part of this, so, just because it's not permitted doesn't, my, my last question.
Possibly in the future, maybe it makes sense to add something storage in this district, um, instead of having to go zoning to go back to induct, yeah, so, I mean, that's all the conversations we want to have, and we still have, have to go through all that.
My last question, for caregivers and patients, um, it sort of ties to my traffic, also, it seems to me that this is the, so still aren't the approved, haven't they been for three, have any for five? It feels like the, I just consider, I wanted to make sure we were comfortable with that, that's all. Are there five?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Most recently, we've been talking about.
If I may through the chair, though, I think, um, your comment, um, I think, is it maybe just, but it's also eight occupied, right? So I think there's a, if there is well, but.
So I would definitely encourage, when he's interested in tonight, that, that limits that, that use of that eight associated with this land use, and probably good as well, as it's a big concern when that went through, um. Thoughts, questions, deliberate? So this, this tough one, and I said it's underutilized for so long, um, you know, obviously we don't have the space that we ideally would like to have to create the best version. It's exciting that some life being, you know, to that, and that there's going to be viable business, obviously concerns, uh, usually, not just individually marijuana, but which are, uh, which, you know, aren't always deemed the most desirable uses, but, you know, we're hoping that regulation and enforcement and thoughtful site design that we can hopefully change that perception, um, and I would encourage anyone, tonight, to consider pedestrian activity, the site, and staff, um, and the neighboring adjacent parcels to, though, a cohesive way to delineate access in.
And also, this is another situation where, there's a special motion and a special with the, and the site plan motion is not necessar, just to clarify.
Through the chair, clarifying questions? Plus of the, the actions that we put in this, my, my, really my biggest concern, regardless of how, or not, you know, we're going through the, the special land use process, and my concern still, as we talked about, is, is certain, um, most people are, where they're going, and their last act, and out of there, and if put some type of, and or, or the city to X, Y, Z, it's still not his ultimate. But what would be out, we could write any condition that we wanted, but what would really happen? Is there to actually?
You, you're right, I, I don't have to consult our city attorney, and we could do to make a decision, but, uh, very old working with them, um, and I don't wear eight mile, I mean, eight mile, and this road fault, or future plans, but the conversation is like that, and not just for this side of the tracks, but the other side of the, so.
If I may, through the chair, to look at it from a broader view of just this property, and we're in discussion of road and M dot right now, the railroad will come off the residential streets there currently, now, part of that, it was making the, the railway traffic, the semi trucks out of the, meaning they, they eight transway, so, but just a little ways down the road, there's going to be a much bigger traffic that will, they change the patterns of this whole area, so.
So physical connectivity, the site stuff.
Correct, but when you think about, well, it's going to be much more heavily, and, and again, I don't offer that as pro, or just paint, uh.
Well, and, and I'd like to think, that obviously is, is out for the best interest health benefit as well, and have different level, individual property, in which we're all willing to work together with this, all willing to work together, and some of the questions that, that they take the initiative, and they're not having to really have, be willing to play ball, that.
I wish we could have had a solution before, you know, because if, if they, um, you know, deem that the, the plan may not approve, actually, those, those, this sort of, you know, mess up the, the whole little neighborhood, we're trying so hard to, to carefully, thoughtfully.
Well, and once, and I don't know if, but as part of that, yeah, there is, we talked about this main driveway that's in front of the pawn shop, there's like, you know, a kind of, but here close to West End, could make an aisle here with angled, which again, shrinks down the section that's needed in terms of an aisle width, and the depth of parking, if it was angled parking.
Do we, like, city, do that? Could recommend it to M dot?
That's not, yeah, it's a recommendation, um, but it wouldn't hurt to have the support of the businesses, council, neighborhood, um, again, eventually.
I'm just picturing traffic, or, or looking at, as I'm coming down, down, and it's, it is, you can't, it's the thing that brings me about this.
The other thought, sorry. Sorry, um, I thought was to, um, if you're talking about one way on the access road heading west, is it kind of?
That's the way, right? So now we're contemplating basically cars coming toward, a narrow service road, as I'm, you know, four and a half-ish, your little service, you know, there, and, uh.
Yeah, I'm just, I think the other thing is, yeah, I think the reason that M dot mentioned that, or, you know, this two-way, is the limit traffic that goes to Bennett's, so, there, that we can evaluate.
But I guess Kate's comment, this is where you're heading, but drive closest to West End, I don't, I don't think there'd be a position to limiting that to, to only, essentially. I know you're probably talking more about access, which is what M dot has said, two-way, this right here, I think, more safety, so I think one-way here, at this first curb cut closest to West, reasonable, and again, recognizing that this is an M dot, with ideas, instead of just expecting them, so I think, yes.
Just like I watched you.
Yep, thank you. For the motion maker.
We're taking this, that's all right.
All right, ask a clear. Or to put a, working cord, co, M dot, exception for this, and hopefully making that first curb cut a one-way, uh, if you possibly needed prior to going to city council.
I'd like to offer some, if you don't mind, I, I agree with the sentiment, I don't know that, if, if the commission and council has moved with this, um, I don't know that, because it could be eighteen years before M dot takes on it, and I think that's an expectation necessarily for the business owner, M dot's not, less as it were, but I agree with the sentiment.
So there's been lots of thoughts. Open to hear other ideas, suggestions, concerns, otherwise, for our motion. Try this again, so I'm going to make, then, the planning commission, in the matter of fifty mile road, the commission recommends, with conditions, then used based on plan positions stated in received department on January twenty-six, I mean, I think in updated sheet tonight, with the findings and subject to the conditions, yeah, all the findings, the conditions, so I'm going to try this, um, with, uh, the, um, condition five, uh, there were a few amendments made to the business, uh, that we can go back through, um, let's see, six, um, that the land limited to, as submitted, uh, that any future build out, uh, would need to be, operation, parking addressed, um, then is currently put out aside, eight is, um, storage from, is not acceptable, or not permitted, thank you, um, and, um, that staff with the applicants and to define drive pedestrian pathways and parking, um. Hey, thanks. Okay, is that it? That's it, but, yeah. Do we have a second motion on the table?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. I, one, come I have the sign, is allow, which, I prefer to go, right, to have signage, okay, updated plans to show. Okay. That's, about that. That's a good question on that one, too.
Uh, can I make a amendment, seven, then, if you're, if you're support?
Let, let's, quick, um, and of course, they have a first, get to have sign language on there if, if they want, but if their proposal would go forward, would prefer to do, to do it today, and their pro, signage, I, I think that, uh, some, some of the concern that, that you're going to see around any of these facilities is going, uh, based on a, knowing or believing whether it's true, or, uh, that, that there's something there that they can come in and take, some marijuana available that they can take, uh, if it's going to be a facility, uh, their basis, most likely not going in, and the applicant is, is to go forward signage, I, I, I'd be in support of, of, and as, I mean, that the applicant is, is okay with.
Can we get, can the elevation today, do, sign, like, we'd like to hear from the applicant? We'd, we'd like to hear from the applicant this time? Do you have any? Okay, right, okay.
Even though the applicant agreed through the, or just one, Connor, if, do you, we have pretty specific sign ordinances here, make these folks come back through the planning commission if they decided to, and I'll use the example, pick a, a name or a sign that, that doesn't create any perception, for example, CVS doesn't, on their side, but they certainly stock it, um, I just, I think for ease, it is a city, that I would allow in the future in, with some marijuana ordinance, but again, make or break decision, I, counter argument.
They propose then to change that, though, a sign is not proposed, any future sign, it should, um, follow our current ordinance. Second.
Given that.
Hardly amend, the, the condition number seven, oh, no sign, currently, the future signage in accordance, is permitted. Third discussion, um, the, um, I would just, not, no, in the back, it'll be removed. Oh, true, yeah, sorry, how's that one? For the certification, there was a, to the business, did we just, those were?
Right, I know there was one about striking form in the employees, that there was, um, access to events to members only.
Um, extending the defense and application to caregivers.
Attorney's feet?
Taking on the liability of. They work, you, you interchange, use an employee, which is a specifically defined term, uh, of independent contractor, and my question went to that, and the answer was, you aren't going to really have these, you're going to caregivers that are, and you may answer front desk receptionist, who takes on, was a salary or an hourly wage, um, the treatment of independent contractors in the terms of liability insurance, different than that employee, employee shares vicarities with, their independent, often don't share that, if you're in a product facility through a contractor, I think, for that, should liabilities, and that was why I said the organizational document extend its indemnification whole harmless in defense, but for care. And I, and you can, that, we can take care of that, and, that the owner of this company is going to tend to come to the caregivers, the fear that I was expressing through my friend was that you're going to, independent contractor, and dispensing products that you've admitted, you have no ability to test this, this safety of, owner who can say, well, that's just caregiver, that's where my concern, that's either the operational agreement, or the organizational document to extend that. So I'm willing to take on that liability.
There are discussion, I'm going to go ahead and, and motion again, just for everyone's clarity, um, so you have a motion by, reason, Williamson, with the pre findings for preprinted condition, the new condition five, and the business to address, uh, to strike the reference forms, um, events to members only, and, and find liability by Commissioner Farr, six to land use is limited to the plan of, of future, expands out, be back before this planning commission, and the, and reconsider, number seven, that although, which is currently depicted, in the, in the future in accordance with the city, number eight, that stored, stored business within the warehouse, um, on the site, and number nine, that, staff, M dot, neighbors, better create these driveways and parking to maximize for the, for the. Other questions, discussions, discussions? Go ahead and take a roll call.
Okay. Baker?
No.
Yes. Farr?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Martin?
No, with explanation.
Williamson?
Yes.
Uh, Chair?
Yes. Oh, yes.
If I may through the chair, yeah, I, I fully support the kind of business, I don't have a problem with which, who here, uh, I am also incredibly supportive of, uh, and there's still specification to do with council, I'm, I, discussion, get it, but I, I don't feel, here right now, I can vote against my own resolution, so, hence my no, but again, conceptually, I don't have a problem with it, other than I limit.
Um, so that is, uh, from the city council, so, the plan motion on the table, the plan that was submitted this evening, um, Scott, questions? Why is we open, uh, motion this evening? Uh, in the, eight mile road, the commission approved the site based on plan received by the planning department on January, January twenty-six, twenty sixteen, the following find, subject to the following conditions, four, findings, and seven, and adding eight, uh, or in the rear window that is visible, that, that, in the, to Bennett, that has. Okay, on the table, do we have support? We have a motion and support, addition, one condition for the rear window facing Bennett. For, comment, questions, clear?
I, just a question, and, and maybe it's, I should have been more addressing the land use, the bridge on property of, um, I'm just wondering, maybe you can clear it up, um, in one, say, no more usable cannabis will be, that can otherwise be in the possession of the caregiver, um, on premise, in one moment, so, it goes on to this, doctors, if you, just looking at it. And to reconcile that, under, the restoration, the, um, the. The, um, the action, the facility guard storage fee caregivers for the safe storage of marijuana. Um, this is akin to a safe box at the bank. That second contemplation, that they're not leaving it just when they're on, they can use it or the same fee that we talked about as a caregiver must pay to the facility. I would just say if we could add a, I would like to include something of a condition that said that intent at all candidate. From property at the exit circumstances or.
Right.
And clarify my concern, I guess, is the is that this is a to meet up in exchange for marijuana. The intent, the nature of this is not for the storage facility. Um, I don't that. And stating agreement or the site plan necessarily necessarily clarifies that when, um, two. Your plan contemplate storage and for storage of marijuana. A kind of it blurs into this facility, which is a place of exchange.
If I may comment to that through the chair, and it, it just, it was a uncertainty in how you're. Because I don't foresee, I don't. Tight length, and I agree, there's a, there's a reality that thinks, oh, I may be able to break in there. I might get some marijuana, but if it gets reported, you become an even bigger. Um, and so if, if business plan is not medical marijuana, I think it should, don't store medical marijuana.
Well, if you say your business has been marijuana, so I mean, not. When, what, when it is, so then he stores that one, he stores, they're gonna present it to.
But do you see my point two, that somebody brings finds marijuana? Nope. That has been in most.
Don't have, I, I, plenty of them have my storage of marijuana. Do you have questions further on this?
I do. Would. With, do you know storage for the, for, uh, say, having there, a lot of are based on the patients they were. Today, and say a patient does not show up as, as you. Could they take it with?
Yeah, no, there's not really a.
If I, if I may add to that, that very well, maybe, but as a, you know, the right constraint. Yeah.
Sure.
No, absolutely.
Through, to be my concern, the plan, you have eight hundred of the building there. Right, for other people's store, the. I, that's why I made, because in the business plan, you're going to have and we're going to choose. And the other, there won't be storage.
There, do we have a, just amend the motion to add a nine of night storage?
Yeah, no storage of, of medical marijuana on the facility at the tonight.
Mr. President, are you. Night support? There is our.
Yes.
The motion maker and the secondary support, good motion, uh, for number eight, rear window face. Number nine, it'll be no overnight marijuana on this facility. Okay. Other thoughts, questions?
I have a question, um, to the chair about the agreement of, um, fine number one, the condition. So if in our fine, uh, if this is, we're saying that in our opinion, there is a, to avoid our problem. If M dot is with that, uh, so in. A note will be added to the site plan that any future patients to get my all service have to be viewed by M dot staff. Um, if disagrees with our opinion, um, do they? Who, I sort of, who got the. Got, let's say, designs to like problems of.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it is property. They would. But again, that's. Work on and with the app.
And I understand coming with a suggestion for a problem.
Right.
Staff to keep us up to date, as I said, there's obviously multiple projects that are going through this.
Yes.
Is there any amendment, I don't know. Question on the table? We'll go ahead and take a vote for the.
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Reason stated.
Okay. Williamson?
Yes.
Chair Rodiger?
Yes.
Azar?
Yes.
Baker?
Motion passes. So again, it says, so the council, I mean, this is recommended by, uh, I'm sure when you. For council, the idea when it's.
I'd like to confer with any, um, his discussion.
The audience, if you noticed.
We, it was one time, but we, I can. Anytime that we, that attends leaves their address for special and we do send a notice.
Not sure when this will.
Uh, want to include me on that call today, I'd be happy to participate.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Okay, next up, do you have any old business or new business? Call the audience, if there's anyone in the audience this evening that addressed the commission item on our agenda. This is the opportunity to do. Anyone like to address on any. Seeing none, move to administrative items. Anything just.
I'm just viewing a. Open house, as you all know, on Saturday, uh, years ago, at the Rust Belt. There was a variety of ways to give feedback, residents to give feedback, um, and the planners and consultants, uh, as well. Uh, and it had a pretty great turnout. Certain that Hamilton Anderson is still counting all of the emojis that people place, um, on the visual preference. Um, so we're good on that, and part of, um, the next plan, I mean, group is open. Um, we would like to have another session like we did last, so a meeting before our regular agenda, or we could potentially look at it. Um, we can put that offline, um, but something a little. Have a dialogue, um, last, the last meeting was very much about getting the data in front of everyone. The next one, we could talk about or, or a future land use map. We have things that we've seen over the years since the last master. I'll follow up, I'll.
If I may through the chairs, as we're very well done, I think your response was way underreported because more people were taking emoji's home. Right, I seen them on the map, but again, really well done.
Definitely, uh. I think our direction at last planning commission, the consensus was to do on the same.
Okay.
Different nights.
Okay.
Our March agenda is looking, we have a lot on the agenda.
So more than the, uh, thanks.
Just a comment, can we please just. As a special meeting for the public as well, for plan.
Yes.
Um, that would be beneficial. And also I want to item, I probably could fall under administrative, I think, aware that Derek is. His point, um, so hopefully you all receive patient or party next third. So please feel free to. Off proper. Been through this Monday, so if anyone has any planner for, or of the city for now, please make sure. Okay, commission items, um, we do have two items. Faded, I believe this was just rezoning, it's, um, would. And the is. Artfield's. And just going to do a production and then it's the app for interested party. If there's yet. Just background on this.
Sure, uh, I'm pretty, I'm speaking, um. He had recently. Um, it's a permitted use, he's converting it, um, from a single family home. Free family, um, and it's, it's for mixed to three. Um, and he also according adjacent to. Nine Mars. Um, and he requested with staff, but his ability of putting that parcel to. Thing, um, in your packet, there was a plan that owed six, one to two units, uh, marking. It's a very, um, early, um, so, um, should. They have a favorable, um, information from you all tonight, he would come back with a full site. Um, and we'd have some suggestions as well. Um, but to at least see, um, you know, possible to rezone. Into possibly mixed use two, which is. Property of Livernoy and, or, um, potentially, but something for multi-family if, um, deemed that that was. Sit up, um. I'm open, or you have any question? No, my, my, well.
Can contact, what the name.
Sure.
And future land use can call for, print picture. Can you give us your background?
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat that? Uh, just to follow up is, um. Land use, and obviously, um, land use is your family, I believe, well, the resident. And so it, but on the current existing land use, it is our potential west. His property to the, I think, is used to.
And south.
And south as well, yes. Yes, efflux property, which, um, is also potentially the adaptive reuse.
No.
Or no, across the street, excuse me, sorry.
My question. So, a single family home on. It looks like the garage backs up to your, back to your. Okay. So you, you have family homes on either side, correct? One you own and then the one to the.
And.
But you just purchased one, meaning to use it as. I missed that.
For that, uh, the units to it, whole residential.
The current. Bungalow house?
Correct.
On the corner. Gotcha. Got it, okay. Last night, and notice the, the single, the occupant. Home that would be to the west vacant lot. Um. We had communicated with them, like your. Like your. Intention, a lot, do they know own it? Do you know? Is that neighborhood?
And the reason I ask really would introduce elements to that neighborhood. You know. And I've learned about the specific generation. And parking situation. And I see that you have, it looks like three spaces. Eight spaces. There's significant street already also on. Um, so.
That's exactly my question.
It hasn't been taken. Yeah, that's definitely.
I'm. But I mean, no, it's a very narrow.
Things that we were just talking about, questioning this, you, you look like you have a nineteen. Basically. This building in the property line, the wide space for parking, ten foot drive aisle, which I don't, the fire department would be okay. I don't think this plan is shown is. Right. I, I don't think what you're. Is feasible, just based on. And our last planning commission meeting, we had a. But again. It is not used into residential, and I think even as. Reiterated, we don't want to infringe into our neighborhoods. Design is. The Livernoy on for percent. And, and right into the residential street would make strategic locations. I, I'm not sure, looking, just looking at this, and I didn't walk it. Good for you. It was summer. It was warmer. Street trees, and it's nothing but single family. On this. I'd be hard to kind of introduce the. I think Klein, if you were. Bring it to the corner, create something that. Joy. Right, that. I think it makes more sense. Some parcels, create a scale that's weak. To a very heavily vegetated lot between two single family structures. For alternate purposes, it's still the thing in the scale, different. Squeeze something on a fifty-five foot wide lot that was intended. For single family development. Obviously. Looking at alternate. Diversify, intensify our community, especially along our mixed use corridors, which Livernoy. Again, this isn't on Livernoy, this is on Marsh. And so again, if it was something connected to Livernoy, I think I would personally feel more supportive of that. Our residential neighborhoods is something. And I don't think we as a. Do light. Really makes a lot of, I think, I think you have. Commercial development off of you some sense, so that's. I think the boundary westward to a similar location, I, I should be oriented more towards Livernoy. To make sense for me, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I would agree with you reasons. You infringe in the. If you can move it more towards Livernoy, but from a global perspective, I'm always. So if you can find a bit closer to Livernoy, I, I think that's attractive. I mean, anyway. That's what we're seeing.
Belt and almost have to somehow tie in this building, testing building. If you would demo that house. Isolate this property. Develop, but doesn't, I don't think it's even to be. Maybe to.
And I, yeah, and I think that you would want to probably get an architect's opinion if you, you use both properties as one development. Because I know with that garage. That Marshfield and it's a brick building and. Exactly design wise, because. How you would look. I, I agree that orienting it as one development towards Livernoy makes sense.
I was just gonna add, we had a, an interesting plan proposal, some. On West. Lewis. At Livernoy. And that one didn't go forward when it came down to the, a, a pretty significant station about fitting in with the, the, the nature of the existence. A big proposal. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna offer this as an FYI. And a little, little history tidbit, is that your neighbor two doors down is our mayor, Bob Porter, and. West of you, West, on Marshfield. One of, one of Mayor Porter's points about Marshfield Street is the street in Ferndale where all. Um, so it's a, it's a little sort of known. Back to what Street, the longtime resident. Tried in that. I looked at sort of the stone and siding and things and I. Oh, he talked to his neighbors and he's going to hear this. Offer that, of whether it's. That house up here in some way, kind of keeping that. That, that neighborhood on Marshfield. In, in that their homes are.
I think if I may. World says he may not be a direct neighbor, but I wouldn't make an alternative. Make a difference.
I believe he's two doors down, he has a little phone on his.
Yeah. South side, yeah.
Yeah, south side.
If I may. M X D on, on Pine Crest and Nine Mile and. What, it's that zoning, getting that zoning that's allowable could be. So. Benefit in being higher density resident, but really to make an M X D two, it starts just anything and everything that could be factors. Waiting. Being loading area, so less. Limited to. Residential, in Livernoy that'd be great, but I think some of the other uses that are allowable in that intrude down that. So. So, we're talking up with staff on this, maybe discuss.
That discussion we had, absolutely.
When we were looking at. With the. Forward facing on the main street, letting the back door. All sudden be the door. So this would all could be what should be. Space, and, and like you said, some corners could be developed to rent more and. We don't. So. Need to be virtual vegetative buffer clean house, anything that you would do on that. Bring that existing vegetative buffer. Now, and then plant. Artificial. Be a natural, which I would hope they. Would kind of natural break. That, that would. As part of redevelopment. Of that area, but really I think your best chance is to go buy in those parts, one cohesive development. This scale and compatible with residential that's already there. Any other direction or do you want to answer by this? What you said about the green, there's so really much. Development, actually most. Efflux or the brewery or even down to Eight Mile, it's been a lot of great. So if there's any way to keep, keep more green space or really embrace trees that are there as an asset. Anything else, my other commissioners? Good luck. Next, night seventeen five Pine Crest.
Yes, um, so. Pine Crest. So. Um, a resident homes dental office. Derek, here on behalf of the owner, they've been. That, and for sale, they've been. Selling it, there's been a few. Once when I let. But they've, that the zoning has kind of prohibited. Future uses, running right now, only M R one, until your land, though, for low density residential. But the house currently contains dental patients and some of the equipment and things like that, so there's been interest from veterinarians and. Other people that was sort of mixed use with it. The property is. South on, there is a dry in the corner. So. The. Kind of see potentials, rezone it, yeah, M X D. But wanted to get your thoughts and just kind of just any potential option, so.
Upped it to the.
Yeah, it's a twenty, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet and. Square feet. Accessible through all.
It was connected to the. Right, because it does not cross. Can't get nine mile.
To the chair, I have that dry cleaner site too. Would a change to, Justin, would a change? So basically we just told the. To consider being a, a parcel. That here, so would a change to one, which makes a lot of sense here. Kind of some sort of gigantic parcel with that dry cleaners, which.
Um. Um, you know, I, I think we looked at. And for this property, I know.
Probably have more.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I don't know if this is a property that's for sale, although we recently that has been.
In the past, Dr. Flagman himself, oh, um. You know. Zoning ordinance, since you were.
Also say, so your alarm.
Yeah, because I don't want like a giant on my corner. Right, so if, so if the, if the use overlaps enough between M X D one. Commercial. That there's enough of an overlap, that someone potentially, not even necessarily someone Derek's dealing with, but if someone potentially buys those two properties. To do something giant on the corner. And Nine Mile, that's my, because it's.
Or mission because M X D one or. Establishment's small.
It's designed. Footage, but I'm guessing the square footage would probably allow for a wall. I'm guessing that was kind of a big.
If I may through the, couple comments, I, I, I applaud your trying to be entrepreneurial, not in favor of doing that, as I. Have operated an office there six, many years, it's, it's still very, very key and within the character of the neighborhood. The dry cleaner is now a very residential state. Um, I, I, I think through. To own this, to allow us to go there, even a vet. Nation would be potentially drop neighbors, so. Um, I, I just don't think it's a good that, of that lot and. It's never been used for veterinary. It's been used as a very low key business that has a low number of clientele that walk through there in the course of a day. Uh, and spaced out, there's only, there was only one dentist. Think that's manageable, but if you put in some within this, you're able to sell it. Changes the nature of, of the neighborhood. I just drive by there, I just see it, struggle with that, and so my initial reaction. More discussion. Is that, uh, it, I'm not a, not a fan.
I'd say for the same reasons, I've looked at the site, I pay either. Times a week, um, per year, and it would be an intrusion to leave one property corner and expose next street beside the actual area. I think this would. I see a good demarcation between the commercial and the. And nine mile, so I don't think it's sort of protecting the neighborhood or improving it. Right behind it and the scale and the field would change.
Sure, I, I, I do like keeping it a whole, because I'm disagreeing, I just don't know if the M X. The right approach, um, or if there's a way to approach this through a resident. I, I like having businesses in my neighborhood that I can walk to and I would. Small boutique as it, as it was, boutique. An accountant. A, a dentist, do you. I've been in my neighborhood and this is. This is in Nine Mile, my, my biggest concern is, is the create sort of this. Gigantic parcel there, you know, next to the church. The house would then really like in, in sort of encroach onto resident. Lights and more traffic, but a small. I, I do like that in some hard walkable neighborhoods, but. Yeah.
Or dog barking or, yeah.
If I may, sir, through the chair, again, I'm not questioning your credibility, but as the agent responsibility to steal from the owner through the sale. So as far as just, so what could be, wouldn't stop a great offer from. Honestly, your client, this is the chunk of cash more than anything else. It goes to the character of the neighborhood, I think. I don't mind you thinking about it, I just.
Oh, are you? Okay.
My neighbor's straight across the street.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Um, I think here the, the piece of property is residential, I mean, you wouldn't know that that's a dentist unless told you or. I drive by that property, my sister on that street. In no way do you notice it. on that street, in no way do you notice it, to change the zoning extinguishes the ability, changes the ability to use there, that would, a type of business that could come in there, and it just, it just changes that, it moves Nine Mile down.
Well, I guess what I would ask is, if you're, if you're meeting where.
So, a lot of the things.
Business that.
Okay.
So, just distributed, our one, where, and the twenty-five hundred square, the dentist office in there.
That can't, right, because if I'm looking at our definition of, we call it a home business in the, in the zoning chart, our definitions, we call it home occupation, I think, is the same. That activity, it's deemed to be a home occupation, include a number of things that, talking about, medical clinics, supermarkets, nurseries, daycare centers, beauty parlors, tea rooms, veterinarian hospital, veterinarian offices, and animal, so, not to be technically in our organs, so, you know, if someone was an attorney, or, again, you know, a single, this, I guess, sort of, a lot of that from home occupation.
Well, just, I think, I think you're talking about the things that it excludes, but we're not looking at potential, I think a great, that you could do a lot of home-based, offer a lot of, I mean, if you're a designer, the home occupation, I'm saying incorrectly, away from businesses that have travel, that will discourage, I mean, this is a great piece of property I've looked at, as I think it's a beautiful piece of property, and I just thought of, I don't think you're limited there, I think, right person that wants to do the right type of business in there.
And, just to, I mean, home businesses, I think is a.
There's two different.
Oh, am I in the wrong place?
It's, I, I, but within the ZR one, home businesses, the definition, so, permitted within single-family residential is family care, which I believe, and I believe it's less than six.
Right.
We have, we have, crafts and fine arts, tutoring, and then home office and studios.
Teachers.
Right, but it has to be incidental to the residential use, it's more of an accessory.
And, and just to.
Twenty-four.
Case where I strongly, than some of my, just looking at the MXD, of the MXD, especially the MXD one, they were supposed to be purely in residential neighborhoods, and when you look at what is MXD one, looking at Marshall between, and Woodward, and a little section up on Woodward Heights, but the idea of the MXD districts, both one and two, were to be on busier roads, community, that kind of serve as transition between core business area, on busier roads to, and allow some of that walkability, we have to necessarily do, to, some service, I, so I'm, I feel less strongly about it, and I like transformation, and I would maybe be more supportive, I'll maybe a conditional MXD, we'll be limited to maintaining the, sure, and maybe limiting the use, it's off, situation, I look at, you know, I look, I want to live on that, in that location next to, and soften that transition, and MXD one was that exact intent, position, allow, are compatible, there's a way to even further refine MXD one that better for potentially some future applicants, I personally would that, I think maybe if you propose something that has certain limitations, that may ease some of the, but that's, again, kind of like the, the last, the last, property that's on a purely residential, I mean, this is a main thoroughfare, next to some more intense use, edge of our downtown, I'd be more, I guess.
Kind of a.
Well, that's something that can be outlined in a conditional rezoning.
How's, no, the house is backyard, the house, we see through that, there's less, I think, between the sliver that we're leaving, where, so, which are, for not to leave any out there. But, but narrowness, lot, you can see right through it to everything, so it, what's, everything on the next, you can see it.
So, again, you know, the commission tries to be very, to preserving our, and not infringing that's current zone for, and turning it to commercial, if it's not.
My, that was, our one, kind of, I updated, which are, run into the.
Additional questions you have, question?
Appreciate you, I appreciate, because I think there's, as you've seen, a lot of opinions here, so.
And again, and it's good to alleviate potential concern, a lot of times there's a way to, if the, that can be needed, then, anyone, it'll easy. Okay, any, any thoughts? All right, good luck. You're welcome. I know this was on, I know last, very long, I remember, this commission, council, first planning commission, I guess, we've kind of done this a lot lately, but can we go through the table one more time, everyone, just that we kind of all, we have, we're missing one tonight, but, the end.
Dan Williamson, welcome, the councilman, tenured resident of Ferndale, I'm an attorney, I've spent a lot of, work, I did a fair amount of study of architecture and urban planning when, before I.
Cool.
I'm Dan Martin, I'm, my second term on city council, I'm also, under the Ferndale Community, and I'm director of Ferndale Youth Assistance, by, I work at Blue Cross Blue Shield, and my educational background, I have an MPA from Oakland University.
My name is Nina Kelly, this is, and one day, I lived in Ferndale for one, and I became, I am the manager here on Metro Parks, before I did, for several, I worked in Georgia, I was born and bred in Georgia for almost, at a regional planning agency similar to some.
My name's Jeff, I've been on the planning commission for, I think, a year, something. I'm an attorney, I, in real estate transaction, ownership, a good house for, companies doing that, I now do, love for the most part, been in Ferndale for probably fifteen years with me.
Where you work?
I work with Mike.
I always get asked when I hear that.
I have Billy almost every day.
Mike Morse's mom, I wonder if she's really.
I work with Blue Cross Blue Shield all the time.
Well, we're getting on every.
Other times.
That's great, thank you.
And, third year, and planning, by how, mission the same day, planning, by, for the city.
Oh.
Deb Brayson, thirteen, Ferndale resident, nine year?
At least.
Nine year planning commission member, architect by training, work at Wayne's. Yeah, same table.
I had the honor of seeing Kate when she decided not to run and first got involved.
So, we've never been up here together.
No, we haven't.
Very happy.
I know, right?
I am, that's, the, I, I try to think back, I was like, when, we're council, so, we're coming, years on the, the exception, you know, college and some associated travels, resident for thirty years, which is like, things like where the former mayor lives, every house on Marshfield is bricks.
Oh, no, Bob will tell you.
Oh, Bob will. So, currently, managing director at the Detroit Historical, and, and, background was in urban planning, economic thought.
That's our one.
Thanks.
I don't know how long I've been, I've been here longer than them.
She's the high senior.
Been around Ferndale, two masterful, for almost twenty-three years, and, tech and state, Deb in the design construction. Justin?
Uh, I'm a, I'm a.
Soul planner.
Planner for a little, only a little while, but I did not know, Councilman Martin, pardon, my undergraduate, was from Michigan, well, so, and I'm, most of this, soon, be a Wayne.
What, when you say.
Yes.
Makes, they're coming out of.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That just leaves, mom, that was me.
Yeah.
Seventeen years on, like, a month, with the city, through public, recreation, CED, finance, because they, deputy clerk, if you can't, he calls us, pardon?
Nebulous job.
Oh. Good deal.
This first shock over my heart, and he was looking for other opportunities, I, because this is, it's always intrigued me to participate in, so, having me, and.
Coming forward, that's, I think, just for your benefit, we've discussed, and I, to give it their fair, you know, diligence that we really need, we need designated time, and a meeting where we're away, family and loved ones, to just do it prior to a regular schedule, and they'll provide food, and we'll kind of, thirty-five, and just, and then.
Anyone, so.
All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn.